What can be done consistent with town's will? We have, we did pass the, uh, the master plan underpins everything we do. And we did pass an energy chat.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I meant at the highest level. You guys are the people who oversee that the master plan is being pursued. Right, so, so I guess, you know, having been here last, a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago, the way I, I think about it is, there's not really, I don't, I don't believe there's actually a tension between executing the plan of the town around, you know, environment and well-being and housing, whatever else it might be, and the desire to reduce the town and, but a town, that's the town itself, obviously, and its residences, impact on the environment when it comes to energy. And so, the, you know, when I was here last, it was a very specific discussion around, wow, what about large solar arrays and da, 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 da? But it, it had an imply, and then, and so, and that was to answer the question of, if we have a goal to be a hundred percent renewable electricity by 2030, how do we allow that to happen? But, but I think there, it's worth, and this is in the context of the town's master plan and planning board, is to say, well, what are the real goals here? And I, and I would guess for many people, but not everybody, it's like, well, I'd like to reduce my carbon footprint, my impact on the environment. And, and, you know, that's not just how much gasoline you burn or fuel oil or whatever it is, or drive, but also the promotion and propagation of the ability for other species to exist and be in some kind of ecosystem that actually semi functions. And so, you know, when I heard that question about cutting down trees, and I, and I don't, I don't doubt what was put out there, which says the carbon payback is relatively quick, but then we lost this section of trees or, or, or open farmland or whatever it was, or open grasslands, and was that the best way to achieve what people really wanted to achieve? So, and I'll pause here in a second, but I, I think the question that is really on the table is, what's the real goal? Cause you can have a hundred percent renewable energy that, you know, is net zero or something, but if you use electricity grid at night, you're actually not. You're using some carbon-based electricity from somewhere. And so, you're sort of fooling yourself into the belief that you actually did that. And then the question is, what trade-off did you make to get there? So, I mean, that, that would be my highest level response at the moment. There's many other pieces to it, um, you know, including where does energy efficiency play a role? What about individual homes, um, and, you know, transportation and other things that are important to that question about carbon impact?
Well, I guess, uh, we have a town energy committee.
Right.
And, um, so I see their role more doing outreach maybe with particular homeowners about weatherization and those types of things. What the planning board does do is we, um, have, um, we, we write amendments to the zoning ordinance, and then the town votes on those amendments. So, um, what we are trying to do is to ensure that our rules are consistent with the town's vision of trying to get to a hundred percent renewables. Um, so, and we've also kind of made the assumption that not everyone's gonna put solar on their house. Therefore, we need to have some larger projects that people can either, you know, support or buy into in, in some way. And some of those larger projects should be here, and we shouldn't just put them all in, in Derry, New Hampshire or something. So, um, you know, it's kind of, I think the group is, has been thinking that it's our obligation to host some of those solar farm types of places here, and we want to be sure that our regulations aren't excluding that from happening, so.
Well, I think that's what we're figuring out actually, is what is the will of, of the board? Um, and I, and one of the, what, what you just raised is something I think we were gonna need to grapple with, which is, we, with the master plan, we have all sorts of aims and objectives. And part of what we need to figure out are the trade-offs. You know, for instance, with overlays, uh, the farmland, those things, we're actually gonna have to deal with, well, okay, uh, are we going to get rid of any restrictions on, in areas that are designated as, say, say we do have large, uh, large SES districts, um, are we gonna have, do away with the twenty-five percent limit? Um, steep slopes, wetlands, all of those things are important in the master plan, as are the ecosystems and the, the natural resources chapter. So, tho- those are things we're gonna need to consider.
I mean, I, I guess, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, um, oh, well, I was gonna say, I've been thinking about this somewhat, and, um, if our goal is to have the majority of people in line getting their electricity from green energy by 2030, it seems like we can do that a lot sooner than that. Because right now, the way, I think this is true, um, everybody that's on Eversource in line, which I think is about, what, seventy-five percent of people, if, if they don't have solar panels, they can make a phone call and they can be on green energy for fourteen point two nine cents. So, in theory, next week, we could have three-quarters of the town on green energy. And then I would hope that maybe in not too many years, uh, soon, that New Hampshire Co-op would offer all green. So that would be the rest of the people in town. And then, other people would have their solar panels, which is great, you know, they, they would have that, everybody that wanted to. So the town would be on, we could be on green energy.
Yeah, but I, I think as a, as a board, we can't, we can't work from the assumption that something like that's gonna happen. It's, it's possible.
But isn't the mandate of the board to make Lime's electricity syst-, uh, consumption green by 2030?
No, it's the whole town. I mean, the master plan has a lot of stuff in there, but all, the planning board only has a little bit of control over the stuff.
Right.
That's in the master plan, a lot of it is private initiative. Um, so, but it's not, it's not this board's, um, goal to make that happen, it's the whole town. And we want to facilitate that by ensuring that our regulations are not in, you know, in, in obedience to that, right?
This board spent a bunch of time developing ordinances, re- regulations for small systems and for sort of mid-sized systems. And initially, our inclination, I think, was just to not allow larger systems. And then, towards the end of the regulatory development process, we, uh, had reason to rethink that, and so we sort of put the, put things on pause. And really, what I, I mean, you guys jump in and correct me if you think this is wrong, but it seems to me what we're, what we're struggling with now is, okay, if we're gonna not just prohibit larger solar systems in the town of Lime, what do we want to say about that? What, you know, do we want to limit where they are? Do we, do we want any kind of size limit? Do we want, uh, other sorts of location limits? Do we need to, uh, think of, do we need to, um, i- is there a numerical limit? Uh, like, if we're gonna write an ordinance that says, here's the rules for large solar systems, what should that ordinance say? And, uh, you know, what does that look like?
But, the other thing I would say is that, um, if we do, if the town does go with the community power coalition, assuming we did, um, I know Mark Bollinger in one of his emails, Republican, said projects like the Kirsage project, um, MW ground mounted PV projects are more likely to be in competition rather than cooperation with community power aggregation. So, if we actually went with, with what the aggregation commission or committee's working on, you know, then do we really want large, so then what's the point?
I think, I think that's, we're gonna have to get into the weeds now. Um, and part of the weeds is deciding what we're gonna promote and, uh, what limitations and the competing interests, because there are a lot of competing interests.
Well, I guess to that point, I mean, what we're saying is, oh yes, let's go buy community power and from a solar installation in Derry, New Hampshire. Is that, is that responsible? You know, and for us to like, oh, because, you know, why shouldn't we be hosts here, um, to create some of that, you know?
But I think if we, if Lime didn't have large solar arrays, it wouldn't be keeping any of these large for-profit companies who are building these, it wouldn't be keeping them from building any. I mean, there's plenty of places, they can build them anywhere. So, you know, I guess that's one point, that if we don't have one here in Lime, it's not like it's keeping any of them from being built.
I guess, go ahead.
Uh, well, no, you go ahead.
Uh, so, parking some of my questions from earlier, cause like, so I was three levels above you guys, so, assuming we're gonna try to have a hundred percent green electricity by 2030, and that's the will of the town, then really what it comes down to, what's, to me at least, is, what's the most cost-effective way to do that in most aligned with the current plan for the town, the master plan for the town, right? And do we actually have to adjust it or not? And, and, you know, I, the, the thing about power system, which is different than many things that people are used to dealing with, is, we can say like, well, we should do it here, but if it's way more cost-effective, do it somewhere else and ship it in, then we should think about that at least. And, um, and, and that may or may not be true. I, I also think that when you make a commitment to power, you're making a twenty-five to forty-year commitment. This is not five years. And so, the world's gonna be really different in twenty years. Like, I, I would guess offshore wind in Maine is gonna be very big, um, there will be transmission problems. I think there will be continuing costs, lowering costs of solar and storage. And so, the answer you might get in a time, in the future. And so, I would just urge you as a planning board to think about the fact that, well, if we say, let's open up the gates, just to take an extreme example, and let people develop stuff commercially here on either open lands or forest, because it makes sense if we do some of it here, it, you know, it's at what other costs and what could happen in ten or fifteen years? And, and I, I also would say, and I think this is probably a true statement, it's highly likely that in Lime, the cheapest way to reduce our carbon footprint using electricity is through more efficient appliances and more efficient buildings. And so, if we're gonna, if we're gonna open up development of lands that have traditionally not been developed, so that we can make up for the fact that we didn't actually execute on our own, each individually, with incentives to do this, then we're, you know, we're chasing this answer that's like, well, we'll just get the green answer and we won't actually deal with stuff that's really fundamental, like the refrigerator's twenty years old, I have three chest freezers, or whatever it might be.
So, so, so to put the potato on the fork, is it your inclination that we should just not, at least initially, permit large solar systems to be developed here in Lime?
I, I, I would, my, my gut instinct is that I would want to see a compelling case, thinking through twenty years, that says, here's why this is a better answer than the other things that we could do as citizens in Lime. And to, and to avoid the answer that says, well, we can't really deal with efficiency and homeowners and all that, so we'll just plunk down some solar, and that's gonna make us feel better about what we're doing without understanding.
You just touched on something, which is the emotional, uh, level of this, which is, and, and something I'm, I'm interested in, which is, you, you know, solar has just become like, uh, such a, uh, you know, everybody is on board, which is great. But it's really hard to differentiate the emotional aspect of, you know, we can feel good about this, uh, we can say we're a hundred percent. And, and what is really, maybe there's no divergence, maybe that's the best thing, but is there a divergence between us just feeling good that we're doing this and having a best outcome?
Yeah. I mean, the other thing to think about, and again, thinking about ten years from now, or whatever the number might be, are you guys familiar with this term, the duck curve in California?
No.
So, the duck curve, it looks like a duck sort of, you think about it, but whatever. What happens in California, has been happening now for maybe five years, is there's so much solar on the system, that during the middle of the day, all the other generation gets tuned way down, anything that can be tuned down gets tuned way down. Because once you build solar, it's free to run it, so it always dispatches first. But starting around three o'clock in the afternoon in California, going through about six o'clock, seven o'clock at night, they have to ramp up by three or four or five gigawatts. And so, they're turning on, they're essentially turning on three nuclear power plants between three and six in the evening, and that's a huge problem. And so, they don't want any more solar on the system that doesn't have storage.
That's the thing, is storage.
And, and so what's gonna happen here and other places, cause stor-, you know, solar's just gonna get cheaper and cheaper, is that you can keep putting it on, but everybody loves it when the sun's out, but you may not even be using it, and nobody wants it, well, you, you can't get it when the sun's not there. And so you have to pay for storage, and so balancing that whole thing is a huge issue. And so, you know, it hasn't happened here yet, but it can happen that in ten years, we're in a situation where nobody really wants the solar in the middle of the day, and then we're driving some other issue. So, I, I, I just think a, a measured, um, approach that probably doesn't change the way you do your planning and what you zone is fine, because what we need is the whole system to change, cause we're part of the system. And we, we've lived off the grid for ten years, but we're anomalous people that way. And, and it's just, so for us, we don't really care, we just care about our solar system. But for everybody else, you're part of a system, and there are all these things that are going on in the system right now that are changing, that are probably way more powerful than any individual solar system we can put in here.
So our ordinance was good as it was.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll get there.
Well, I just had a question for Steve. So, how, maybe you don't know this, but how far away do you think we are from people ha- having their own storage in their own house with their own solars or whatever? So that they could, I mean, that seems to be the ultimate solution, so they could be off the grid like you guys.
Well, I mean.
Everybody, that would be the best thing, if everybody could do that, you know, have enough storage.
Or, or loosely connected grids, if you think about it that way. So, I actually had a conversation with PG&E, the utility that went bankrupt and then rose from its own literal ashes in Northern California, a couple of years ago. And I, it's something I've been promoting since they first burned up the forest and all these houses, was, hey, those edge-of-the-grid folks, it's gotta be cheaper to actually have them off the grid. They started a program about eighteen months ago to look at all those grid-edge customers and not have to pull in new transmission lines and new distribution lines and all that. And I've talked to the New Hampshire Electric Co-op people about this. I think it, it, it could well be in ten years that, for people who are on the edge, not in, you know, if you're in the center of Hanover, you should be part of the grid, but if you're on the edge, that, or maybe where I live in Flint Hill Road, ten, we've never lost power so far, knock on some wood. But, um, if you had ten homes that are interconnected and they're on their own storage system, then it can be that, on average, they never run out of power. But, but I, I mean, I think for right now, that, I mean, that's gonna be a business development where people would actually literally go, hey, we'll take you off the grid and we'll service your system. It's not much service, right? It, it's, it's pretty standalone stuff. So, that could happen.
Yeah, cause then you would have to pay delivery charge, I mean, you'd be totally.
Right, I mean, there, there was a, a study done at RMI about ten years ago on, on the economics of going off the grid. And basically, at that time, at thirty cents a kilowatt hour, it was like, you should just go off the grid. And I saw an electric bill in New Hanover recently, and it was thirty cents a kilowatt hour. So, yeah, so, you know, in twenty years, it could be, that makes more sense.
Well, I know that a few years ago, Green Mountain Power was subsidizing, uh, battery, I think whether they were Tesla batteries.
Yeah, the power wall, yeah.
Right, because what they were saying was, I think was that if enough people had those, then they could switch to those during peak times.
Yep.
And the power company wouldn't have to buy electricity, as much electricity during peak times, it would save them a lot.
Yeah, yeah. And, and New Hampshire Electric Co-op has, I think, a three-megawatt battery that they're using this peak shave for the whole system that they serve, and they've been doing tests where people can generate power on one roof and sell it to another house.
So, did you, did you have a chance to talk to, to, uh, somebody from?
I did talk to Brian, I, and I, I think he's just really busy. His whole family got COVID in the last month, and we sound like Mam with the kids in school or not in school and all that. But I think he's willing to talk to you. But, you know, there, I think now that I've heard more tonight, I'm not s- so sure it is valuable, other, becau- other than the fact that, what they did is, they were up a couple of levels, which says, if we wanna decarbonize for our customers, there's all these different layers of how to do that, such as, our vehicles use fuel, and could they be electric? Can we buy greener electricity, which is where the starting point of the whole strategy was? Uh, how do we promote energy efficiency in appliances, time of use charging for ve- electric vehicles and all that, that will help our customers decarbonize in the most cost-effective way? But, but that's like, you know, three levels above going, hey, we wanna be a hundred percent green electricity by 2030, how do we do it?
I think our interest in talking to them was partly to ask the same question we just posed to you, and that's, if we were wanting to allow people to build larger systems, how, are there natural limits? How would that, how would those kind of systems need to integrate with your electric distribution system? You know, it doesn't do any good to allow somebody to build a giant system somewhere where there's single-phase, you know, rickety power lines and they can't transmit the power they're generating, so.
Yeah, no, so I, we can definitely, I mean, I think Brian will come to the surface here in the next month or something like that. Uh, but I, I can also answer some of those questions, uh, in terms of, because I've done grid systems in island nations in the, in the Caribbean, the studies that need to be done are just some of the ones that were already shown last week, which is like, what is the capacity of the system? And then, it, you know, depends so, you know, how much detail you need below that. I don't think there's any natural limit, because as, uh, was stated last time, somebody can always pay for an upgrade. So, they're doing a business case of, what's my all-in levelized cost of energy? And the levelized cost of energy is, you know, about capital plus operating cost divided by the amount of power it produces and gets paid for. And so, it, there isn't any real limit. Um, I think you guys, if you imposed a size, there, there's some sort of asymptotic declining cost as the s- system gets bigger. Um, but it keeps going down for a long time, so you can put in five hundred megawatts and probably still be saving money. But it's usually because there's a stack of paper about this high, having to do with installations, that, um, means it's the same stack, uh, paper, whether it's one megawatt or, you know, a hundred megawatts.
Any, any more questions for Steve?
Well, I think we have to think about what we actually control. And that, you know, Steve says all correct and true things, but we can't help, we can't make people do things.
No, we can't. So, but, but part of the challenge is figuring out what that, where that is. Are, are we going to maximize things because we can't get people to do things, or are we gonna go the middle ground, you know?
Well, all we can do is en- enable people to make their own choices and keep those choices within the plan of what's the master plan.
Yeah, within the master plan.
Exactly, but, I mean, that's, we, we just enable people to make choices, and I think New Hampshire is so far from having a duck problem.
But let me put it this way, in a very, very black and white and probably not fair example, if somebody said to you, we should put in, whatever it is, a five-megawatt, twenty-acre solar system, which will be green electrons, and we can do that for twenty cents a kilowatt hour, or whatever the number is, and the answer is, we could displace three times that much carbon by replacing appliances at five cents a kilowatt hour, and you need to now make a zoning variance, or somebody has to, so that we can put these solar panels on twenty acres of forest land or fields, that's, you know, how?
Well, that, that's the tension for me, is.
That's the question I would be asking you guys, because.
I'm, you're, you're absolutely right. We can't, we have no input in terms of getting people to weatherize or, or, or efficiency. Uh, on the other hand, what degree of enabling should we, should we do, knowing that there are, you know, other potentially more efficient ways of getting, to say?
Well, what, what if I've already changed my stove and my frivolous expenses that I would like to put in solar? I mean, there's so many ways people are spending their money frivolously, that, I mean, having solar, do you want it their indulgences?
But you're allowed to do that on your property already, right? To a certain extent.
Yeah, but we have, I mean, we, we were faced with a situation where we had someone come in and talk to us, where they wanted to put in a larger system, and this company, Kirsage.
Kirsage, yeah.
Was saying, hey, we can build this, but we can't build it within the limits that you guys have said, cause that's too small, we need, what, what was the number?
They wanted one megawatt.
They, they needed at least a one megawatt to make the numbers work for them. You know, I think your point is well taken, but, but do we really, I don't, and I'm not, I don't know the answer to this, but the, the question it seems to me, or at least one of the questions is, do we wanna be saying to someone who wants to do something like that, no, you can't?
Well, that is the question, yeah. I mean, that's exactly the question.
And if, if we want, if we don't wanna say, no, you can't, then do we wanna say anything about it? Where do we want the industry to be with?
My personal opinion, we absolutely have to say something. We can't just say, go ahead, put it wherever you want.
And, and the reason this has come up, sorry to interrupt, but, is because that suddenly became a commercial operation on that person's property.
Yeah.
Instead of, you know, hey, I'm gonna put up a.
I think it was a, a local resident who had some land, and this company, Kirsage, came to them and said, hey, we'd like to do this, and we'll share the revenue with you, and, yeah.
It was a commercial production in a non-commercial zone, which was, that was the problem.
Yeah, that's, so that's what raised the flag, which is like, oh, this is a commercial operation.
If that had been over just a little bit, it would have been within the commercial district, and they would have been able to do it.
But to talk, to talk again, that's bal- balancing issue, you know, your choices.
Yeah.
If we had let Scott, or not if we had let, but you know, if Scott had been able to put in, hypo, this is all hypothetical, that, that place, and that let him keep the rest of his property natural, because he would be able to afford to live there. I mean, that, that would be a cho- another way to think about the choices.
Yeah, and that's.
Now, he's got ninety, the rest of the ninety-five acres that he has is agricultural and forest.
Yeah.
And he can afford to live on his land.
No, and that, this comes up in the Midwest where we used to live all the time, around farmland.
And that's not gonna mean that it stays that way. I mean, and, and I think, if, more than anything, that means that we have to be really respectful of the natural resource protections that we do have. And, um, yeah, I mean, in that one case, what you said might be true, but in somebody else's case, it might not be, so.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I think we need to start considering things like, uh, you know, the overlays, we've discussed them generally, but, you know, um, with, and the ax oils have come up. We have the, the natural resources, uh, chapter, and we have the agricultural chapter, and, and now we have this, the energy chapter. So, I think we need to make sure that all of those differing objectives are as harmoniously blended as possible, and, and that one doesn't override another. I think that's a challenge.
Yeah, it is a challenge, and but I, I kind of fall back on the kind of comfort that we had with treating solar like other structures.
Right.
So we're still like, and, you know, so it's not, this person can have solar, wants to build a solar, and this person wants to build a barn, you know?
And I think we were pretty, I think we, we had a, an amendment that we were all pretty comfortable with on that, but that changes when you're talking about, you know, five.
Commercial.
Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. Why, I mean.
Well, how, how doesn't it?
Well, how doesn't it is because they still have to follow the same rules that everybody does for overly districts.
You mean, if, if you could have the five acres under the current zoning, if you could have that lot coverage. Then we don't care.
You're talking about lot coverage, but I, I was talking about overly districts.
Oh, okay, I, I thought you were talking about lot coverage.
No, I, I was talking about overly districts and the, what we tend to forget is natural systems are what keeps everybody alive and all the animals and. You know, oxygen coming out of trees and that, so we can't throw away the thing, yeah. I know, no, I know, but, you know, that's what we're talking about when we say, let's not apply our overly districts to solar.
So anyways, pretty, I think it's very interesting and helpful, you know, talking about treating it like structures. Because that's sort of where, uh, my impression of where we all came down is if, if we were still treating it like structures. Like with the, what we had, what we were calling large SES. All we did was just expand, I think, didn't we just expand the, the, the size of, of the lot coverage so that la- larger? Was that it, David?
We were going to.
Yeah, we were going to, so.
But I, but, but that's not overly districts.
Right, I, I know, you just got, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 but that's, yeah.
Can, can I interrupt? Sorry, because my, my value is probably diminishing quickly. I, I would just maybe leave you guys with this thought is. When I think about Lyme and I, I've been a resident for, we've been here like fourteen years now, so we're, you know, in the history of Lyme, nothing. But the reason we settle on here versus many other places in the Imperial Valley is. The history of the town in preserving rural spaces and open land and having relatively robust ecosystems. I wouldn't say intact, but robust, and, and that's continued, but is always obviously under pressure. Uh, and so one of the things I would just encourage you guys as the planning board to think about is. If somebody's saying, we're gonna ask for deviation from the master plan, which is meant to. You know, reinforce the natural ecosystems that we live in and which is the reason why many people live here and, and actually. Is becoming incredibly and uniquely absent, uh, or, or unavailable in here and some other places. Is that why are we gonna make this change? And are we making this change because it feels good because we can do it right now? Or it has an immediate impact right now or whatever it might be? But are we, are, when we decide that some part of our ecosystem is no longer gonna be in its natural state. Is that really gonna benefit? Are we making that big a step? And, and especially given the changing dynamic and that as individuals within this town, we do not act on the things. That don't require any change of status of the ecosystem, other, you know, grappling with this. And, you know, a friend of ours recently, um, she had older refrigerators and freezers and we helped her measure it and it's like. And her electricity bill went down by thirty percent, thirty percent. So, you know, you know, I, I would just encourage you to think about that and that. You guys are part of the stewards of the town's system and its lands. And that there should be really strong arguments as to why we should deviate from the general plan. And be convinced that's the case when we haven't pulled all these other levers. And yes, we can't make people do things, but we don't have to fix what they want some other way. We're just gonna go like, well, we have to do these things, so anyway.
Well, I was just, just trying to get at this answer, do we have a reason to deviate from this bucolic little community? And I guess one reason, just going back to the, where this all starts is. You know, there is a need to go to renewables. Uh, and it has been sort of validated at the national and at the state level. With, I don't know, legislation which is basically permitting it to happen, encouraging it to happen, in fact. And I don't know, reading some of the state's documents on this, you know, there is a sense that. Municipalities should not impede the development of solar. Uh, even in, even at a commercial size and scale. Uh, so, um, you know, I guess the, the question comes up. You know, what if everybody, all the communities in New Hampshire have our view? I mean, New Hampshire after all, it's, it's all bucolic. And if everybody takes that point of view, then, um.
Well, I, I, I don't think we're talking about all or nothing here. I think the real challenge is where is the balance?
Right, right, and I'm, I'm just saying that, that I, I guess I'm with you on that. That, that I don't see shutting things off as, as, as a viable option. I think it's gonna be organic, the way it develops. And that, um, you know, we have to be, at the very least, permissive to, you know, to letting things, uh, not, not obstructive. Uh, in order to, to be consistent with, you know, the, the rest of the state and the rest of the country, frankly.
I mean, I, I'm really vali- valuing what I'm, I'm hearing from Steve because I, I don't think it's a question. That we're gonna, we are being permissive, we're gonna end up being permissive, uh, more permissive than we are now. Just speaking for myself, I just wanna feel comfortable that, you know, the state can say, well, I mean, the state says a lot of things and. Where we need to listen to them exactly word for word, we have to. But where we have, um, flexibility, I think we should use it to, to find the right balance for this community. And that's gonna be up to everybody o- on the board. But I don't think we need to enable everything. I mean, I don't think that, that Lyme should become, um, you know, covered in commercial solar projects. I think that would be terrible.
I think the state is also very famous for being able to say, this is the way everybody in the state should act. But the individual communities may not have the same issues that other communities that the state is reacting to. The, uh, se- senior housing is a good example where the state, um, came out and said, oh, if you have senior housing in your town or anything that promotes it. You have to give those promotions to everybody, any, everywhere in the town. Instead of, you know, whereas the, you know, the, the planning board worked very hard on trying to find the best place for senior housing and then promote it. It's a good thing, every, no one can, or very few people would say it's a bad thing to promote senior housing, but then the state says, oh. Yeah, but any type of housing now gets all those, um, promotions. And, you know, they're not looking at like out at the end of the Dorchester Road where, um, putting in a large apartment building would really not be a, a good idea. You know, the roads just can't handle it. But the state doesn't look at it that way. The state just came out and said, nope, you have to do this.
This is a pretty normal conversation I'm used to hearing, which is there's this supply side. Hey, we should put in solar or wind or whatever, because it's green and it might be pretty cheap too, right? But, but nobody ever wants to talk about the demand side, like why are we using all this power? And so I've talked to dozens of people in Thetford, Norwich, Hanover, Lyme who put in solar. And it covers their electricity and maybe their electric vehicle. And you go like, so do you do any energy efficiency? Uh, well, you know, ah, but it, but. So a whole bunch of money gets spent, it's their money, that's fine, but a resources were required to actually build that system and put it in. And that was the least cost-effective thing they could have done to reduce their carbon footprint. And so it is always easier for people to say, hey, solve my problem by putting in this other solution. And all I'm really saying to you guys is, but watch out, because on the supply side, it's a trade-off. No more field, no more forest, whatever it might be, which is more efficient refrigerator. Hopefully it went to the right recycling place, but whatever, it didn't do anything.
So I can give you another example of that. I was able to convert to, uh, you know, quote unquote, all green. Uh, uh, power supply, uh, electricity supply by changing suppliers. I didn't change anything in my usage. You know, it didn't, I, I didn't reduce what I'm using at all, using at all. To your point, it's great that I could do that, but I'm, I didn't do any reduction in usage. And it's sort of, you know, it feels good, but I'm still producing as much carbon as I was before.
And I, I think the other way to look at it, or at least what I've heard. If people are on green energy and it's fairly inexpensive, green electricity, they're gonna say, well, let's convert everything to electricity. You know, they'll heat their house with electricity, their car, so they actually, the electricity use may go up. You know, because they won't be burning oil, which is great, or propane, but they may use, be using more electricity because they're.
Yeah, but if it, it's, that's, that's the point, is that you actually have to look at the whole budget, so. Like if you put in a heat pump, you definitely use a whole lot more electricity. But if electricity's emission factors are relatively low, then you end up using less than burning propane or oil. And, and, and that's why it's not, there's not a simple answer here. And to put it in the context of, we want green electricity for Lyme, is a good goal. But I think the larger goal that's probably unstated is people are interested in reducing their carbon footprint. And what they need to understand is there are five ways to do that, or ten ways, or whatever the number is. And, um, they need to understand that these are more cost-effective ways to do it than these.
I, I mean, I g- I guess what, it just, you know, when, when the question was put before the town. It, maybe it should have been phrased a different way, right?
Probably, probably.
Which is, because, I mean, when you say solar energy, I mean, I can tell you, can I react? Well, yeah, of course. Um, but maybe it would, would have been, are you in favor of X percent reduction? Of what we're using as opposed to just phrasing it as, as solar? Would people, uh, have gotten on board? And then we'd be having, you know, a, a different approach or maybe we, we, maybe the best thing is to have both approaches. Uh, but maybe, maybe with the, and we can discuss this with the energy committee when we have another joint. And maybe be, again, I don't wanna presume on your time, we can just tell them what you said, but. But maybe it would be good if the energy committee went back before the town and addressed the issue of usage instead of. Just the solar aspect.
Campaign like Solarize Lyme.
Yeah, but.
Solarize on the weatherization and all of it.
Yeah, maybe, I, I'll draw a little picture here.
Oh, good.
I mean, and, and this is, you know, maybe a lower quantitation, that's not gonna happen anytime soon, but. So this is, this is like dollars plus, this costs some money, this is dollars negative. And, and all the efficiency stuff, it, you know, like, this is like turn off your lights. And, you know, this is turn other things off and get a more efficient boiler, a more efficient whatever. This, all this stuff pays back. You know, you buy a better refrigerator, you're paid back in five years, it's twenty percent return, it's good. Then, then, you know, if you're on the electricity side, which probably might cost some money, it might be like, you know, this might be home solar, right? And then there might be another one that says, well, let's put it on all the town buildings or commercial solar. And then, you know, there might be these other things, but, but until you understand the cost of the different components. Of the electricity that could be green, you don't know why you're, why you're giving up some green land. In order to put in a five-megawatt system or one-megawatt system. You can say, oh yeah, that's cheaper than this thing maybe, but it turns out if you put it on your roof, the roof's already there, da, 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 da. So I, you know, to me, if you were being stickler about it, it would be. Show us that this particular project that wants an amendment. Is cost-effective relative to other options that we need to entertain. And we don't really know what those options are, except there's a set of them around home solar, commercial solar, that people in Lyme have chosen not to do. I was flabbergasted to hear it's like twelve percent.
Well, I was flabbergasted here that twelve percent was considered good. That, that's what he said, he said twelve percent was, was a good.
A, a good number, but that, you know, but as a community doing our bit, you know, excuse my language, but what the hell? I mean, you want an amendment to change the town's open lands? And nobody in the town's actually putting solar in? And it's got a decent payback, like, okay, maybe in the bank now you can get some return back, but you know, ten percent return, it's a pretty good return.
So John, I, I held my, I've not spoken today, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna thank everybody for your.
You were allowed to speak at any point and you were allowed to speak now.
I wanted to hear where things were going and, and I wanna pick up a little bit on what Matt said. Um, and I'm feeling impatient. We have seven years before twenty thirty. The town has asked very clearly to be, uh, carbon neutral by, for our electric supply in that timeframe. That's, that's an important goal. It strikes me that it's as important as anything else in the master plan. That, that's certainly much newer than what's in the master plan.
Certainly what?
Certainly much newer, that advice is much newer than anything that's in the master plan. So, so that's, that's number one. It is also true that if you listen to the science, we don't have a whole lot more, um, uh, than ten years. To get our carbon emissions really, really under control because, um, the world will not be good. So listen to this conversation where, well, you know, maybe it'll be better, we'll better understand things ten years from now. Eventually we will. We need to make decisions now to say, well, we'll know better in ten years what's gonna happen and what, how things are gonna sugar out and what, what the right thing will be. That's three years late on our delivery for the town and it's, um, it's really, really dicey. For the, for the country and for the world. So what does this body do in the next month, in the next year? We picked up on something that Hebe said. We can control what we can control. We were pretty happy with the small energy system ordinance and what we're calling the large energy system, which maybe we wanna call medium. I think we should de- declare victory on those. We were all sitting around nodding our heads, we were very close to advancing that to the town. We have a bunch of questions that we came up with, I look at the, the minutes of the, uh, second of March. Are there limits of the distribution grid? How difficult is it to upgrade? And, and basically we said, we should get some experts in here to talk about this. I think it's, this discussion today is a useful agenda setting. I don't think we should continue this discussion for very much longer. Until we actually have answers to some of these questions, because we don't know. And so I guess my request would be to. Advance this, the, the current ordinance, as it was written, the small and what we're calling the large. Declare victory on that, be prepared to recommend that to the town. And. And bring in the experts that we need to tell us some of these other questions regarding. The, the much larger, uh, systems of two-megawatt maybe.
So let me just ask you the first, well, little comment and a clarification, I'll start with a clarification. So are you suggesting that we, we've got that amendment? That we would advance that at the end of the year or are you saying, all right, we've got that and let's do that? I mean, the whole idea, I think, was to putting it off was to clarify. I mean, the whole idea, I think, was to, putting it off, was to clarify what we would do in addition to that, or, or maybe you, you know, I'm not gonna say it's sacrosanct, but, so are you talking about doing that, sending that ahead, and then maybe later doing the large part?
Well, we can't do anything till next year's town meeting.
Right, but that's what I'm asking, I mean, you said, let's send that to the town, I'm, I'm not clear.
Let's be prepared to send that to town.
If we don't have anything else.
If we don't come up with anything else.
Well, that's, that's up to the board, but that's a definite possibility.
This is, this is my contribution to the discussion, that's, that's something that I think, that.
That's a possibility.
We were, we were this close to doing it, and then the Bailey application came in.
Yeah, and threw everything.
And threw everything off. I, I don't think we should spend a whole lot more time on larger systems, on megawatt systems, until we know some of the answers about what the grid can do.
Okay, so I'm just a little confused on the process and, and what you want, so, we would, we would take our existing amendment and have that in, in the background? Is that what you're saying? And then we would gather all this other information, and if there was enough to do something else, we would add it on, but otherwise, we would just send that one forward? Is that inaccurate?
I think that's a totally reasonable point.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking for the clarification. One, uh, only thing I would say in terms of, of your framing, I mean, I think that's a very reasonable consideration. Uh, in terms of your framing, you know, we shouldn't talk about this anymore, and blah, 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 and how you framed it as, you know, there's only seven years and everything. And my perception of this conversation is not that we're saying we're not doing anything about it. I find this extraordinarily helpful for myself, because what we're, what our decision is, is where we're gonna find the balance. And for me, the information I'm getting is, is really worth considering. It's not a question of all or nothing. So, so it's not an issue of, oh, we're not gonna do anything, we're gonna wait ten years. I think it's important to understand how dynamic the situation is, because it helps to put the decisions we're making in the context of everything that we don't know. So, that's just my take on that. Yeah?
Yeah, I, I think um, I, I'm uh, I'm glad Steve came in, because certainly, one of the things that, you know, as a solar owner, you know, I am stuck with my provider, like Vicki has mentioned before, I mean, I can't go out and buy green energy, and so I think it is interesting for us to explore these larger systems and, you know, what is gonna happen, because if we get some larger systems and then those users are residents, we may actually be doing it this service, because, you know, if we have to buy our power from Eversource, and Eversource doesn't get green power, then we're actually kinda shooting ourselves in the foot, and, you know, maybe feeling good that we're generating more power than we need, but we're still consuming um non-green energy, so.
So, Rich, I'm, I'm gonna jump in there, I just spoke to somebody at Revision and said, we've had this discussion, and if I've got solar panels on my roof, and I prohibited from switching from Eversource, and she, uh, this is Kim Park, said, no, you're not, you need to call your alternate supplier and say, will you do net metering? And if they say yes, then you can, so, I mean, Eversource clearly will.
Eversource what?
Clearly will do net metering, so that I can sell the power back to Eversource.
But she said that.
She said that other suppliers, I mean, you need to ask them, and you need to say very clearly to them, I have solar panels, I wanna sell it back.
And she said some of them will, will take that on?
She made it sound as if this was not a fool's question.
Well, I'd like to know who that is, and I also understood that when you sell your renewable energy credit to your, um, you know, it's gone. And so, I can't transfer that, Eversource would need to transfer that
Okay.
to the new people, so I'd like to understand that, but that, I, cause I tried to go with another provider, and I said, well, okay, so what about I have this net metering, oh, we can't help you, so.
Okay.
But that was like, probably five years ago.
Let me just jump, jump in here, and um, I, I don't wanna presume on keeping you here, you know, listening to us fuss, fuss around. You're welcome to, uh, you know, that would be great, but if you feel like you've had enough of us at any time, please, please.
Well, I don't know about have enough, I mean, I don't know that I have much more to add. Uh, I, I would agree with you, though, that I am certainly not talking about delaying, because there's so much that can be done right now. Um, I would just encourage you all to think about the fact that if you're making an amendment to the general plan of the town, you need to convince yourself that there really wasn't a set of alternatives. And then we might, as a town, start to bring up the conversation, says, if we really wanna be leaders in this energy space, then we will do quote-unquote the hard stuff, like, oh, we're gonna be efficient. We will put up solar where it can be done in small scale and distributed, and it'll cost slightly more. And, you know, the CGA stuff, hey, that's a whole nother bailiwick of opportunity, um, that doesn't. The, the community aggregation, that, that's, that's not in opposition to all of this, this is more about how do you create purchasing power around buying green power.
Are you familiar with what hap, what's happened in Keene? Cause it's, I.
Well, yeah, we're at the Community Power.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they, they're just doing it through a different, CPC and H just got a bunch, and Keene went with a different, CPC and H equivalent.
So, they ju, what did they do? They, they just made a deal with direct energy?
Direct, and it's thirteen point nine cents for all green.
But, but, but let, let, just to be clear.
They're not with direct energy directly, they have a different power.
Indirect energy.
They have a group that's managing, is, is the functionality of CPC and H.
Well, all, all I'm really saying is, that effort and investigation can go along in parallel, because in the end, the decision that at least a rational economic community would make is, hey, this is the cheaper alternative to the goals that we want, which might be a hundred percent renewable energy, whatever, but this is the way we can do it. The likelihood that, that Lime can do that with seventy hundred residences, like, we don't really have a lot of muscle. Uh, but if we're part of a cooperative, then we might get more muscle, and, and we can decide to do that, but that doesn't change what we can do in our town to reduce.
I mean, some of the things, uh, uh, one takeaway for me that I'd like to talk to the Energy Committee about is having a similar proposal go to the town, basically to see how serious people in the town are about doing, you know, even harder work, I guess. Uh, that's gonna make, make a very big difference. And, and absolutely, I'll agree with you, that this is not an either-or. This is just helpful information in order to make the determinations that we're gonna make. It's, I, I think it's very valuable, and I really appreciate your coming in.
John, I just, I just wrote down, I wanna say what you just said, say it a little differently. How can we get the town to be informed about the various choices that we're mulling here, because.
Well, I think we can, we can do a questionnaire, but that's not what I was talking about. The, the question I was raising is, how, how can we, just as, as the Energy Committee did with solar, how can we do that with, with the less glamorous um uh possibilities like?
Conservation.
Yeah, uh, basically, efficiency and uh weatherization and things like that, but how do we?
I just had one comment, and I, I've seen these gas bills, for example, in Massachusetts, that come out, and they actually rate your house on efficiency, and I assume they do it with square footage, and they just say, if you're using this, if you're using this type of fuel, you are only in the fair category. Uh, you must be leading. Is there an equivalent for, for looking at some number of details about a, a house uh for electricity? Where you can actually get a grade on the basis of your bill?
Yeah, no, and some utilities have that.
They do.
They literally, you literally get a grade for the neighborhood you're in, and the type of house, and they.
But if somebody in Lime.
So, it's a sort of a statistical thing, that, you know, you, you're similar to these.
They don't know all the details.
Or services where somebody in Lime wanted to, you know, do more.
Yeah, you can pay, if you wanna pay, I don't know how much it costs, because people in Upper Valley will come and do an energy audit on your house.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I know it's something, so, I mean, it costs some money, but you can always have your house.
And Hunter Schneider here in Lime, he got somebody to do that, and got all these credits from New Hampshire Saves, and that's like a huge amount of work down in his place.
These are the things that the Energy Committee could, could make much more um well-known.
But how, but John, how do we, how do we tell people, probably half the people in Lime, how do we tell them that they can make a phone call tomorrow and be on all green energy? I mean, all they have to do is call direct energy for fourteen point two-nine cents, which is probably less than what they're paying Eversource right now.
Well, again, that.
Right, that's what, that's what you're up against, if you can do something like that, then you don't have to do anything.
But, but you should really be doing both.
Isn't that, isn't that central to?
We should be doing both, right?
Central to what you guys are discussing, which is, somebody says, hey, I wanna cut down this five acres of forest, or twenty acres of forest, put in the solar, blah, 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 it's gonna cost this much money, and it's gonna save this much carbon. Great, but if nobody decided to sign up for the fourteen cent green energy, then why are we doing that?
That's right.
Why are we making an amendment to deal with the fact that nobody was that interested in the first place?
Well, I, you know, Rich, you raised, you know, how are we gonna get feedback from the town, and, you know, I think obviously, a questionnaire would be good, and I think we can be creative with it, and it's a, you know, we can ask questions like that. Would you, would you be willing to, to call your energy provider tomorrow and get fourteen point, you know, there's your question, and there's your answer.
But on the list, or just to give the number?
No, what I mean, in terms of getting feedback. We get, get some sort of sense of uh how, how people in town feel about actually doing something themselves. In addition, and again, I'll emphasize, this isn't either-or, I think we're all on the same page in terms of we're gonna be doing something. But why shouldn't, why shouldn't there be a, a way of encouraging a lot more than just the solar?
Yeah, right, the conservation piece.
Yeah, the, well, the, the Energy Committee really, I mean, the next time, the next time that they come here, I think we should have that discussion. Because, yeah, that's not our bailiwick, we're not, we have no way of doing that, but we are having joint meetings with them for a reason.
They don't have any way of doing it either.
Well, they do.
I mean, they can educate people, but they can't educate people.
They could do a, a similar thing that they did with, with, with the commitment to solar. They could put, uh, they could.
But the town can't do that, you can't, you, the town can't vote to make Hebe put in more efficient.
No, you can't mandate.
So, I mean, you know, she might wanna do that on her own, and you can tell her of the advantages, and you can.
So.
But, but the town doesn't have the ability to, i- i- if, if I'm sitting there and I say, I don't care, I, I, I want, I wanna, I wanna coal generating, I wanna put a coal generator in my basement, I, you can't maybe not do that.
That's gotta be a consideration, though, in terms of what we're doing.
And maybe the Lime Foundation could put some money up to help people, you know, make their houses better.
Yeah, you can educate it, you can provide incentives, but unless you get, go to the state level and start, you know, and California's done some of that, I think, that you can enact laws that say you must, you know, you must do this, but, but we can't do that.
New construction.
California can't do that.
Yeah, they can mandate for new, new construction, which is.
Well, Hanover is, they're gonna control almost everything, so, who knows?
But what, what do they do about old refrigerators in Hanover?
Nothing.
No, if that applies, well, you can't really do anything.
They've got a really active energy committee, uh, you know, Sustainable Hanover, that provides a lot of information, and they have this thing like, who knew, and you could save money and get a new refrigerator.
So, they, they just do it with newsletters and?
Yes, it's just public.
But, but, you know, for being honest about it, it's unlikely that Hanover's much more effective in energy efficiency than most other places. It's a really hard road to go down. People aren't interested in it, they would rather have a solar array, or whatever they do. And so, I, you know, I, I think it's just this balance of, for me, the town has a good master plan that is directing and trying to balance all these different things, and if you're gonna deviate from it, then there needs to be a pretty compelling argument that's integrated over, for sure, ten years and better, ten, twenty, if you're gonna make a major deviation. I mean, look, a one-acre solar plot is probably not gonna make a big difference in the town of Lime. And then, the other thing we haven't really heard the numbers for, but is, like, how much of Lime would have to be covered with solar panels for us to meet all of our energy needs?
All of our electrical energy needs?
Yeah, all of our electrical.
Or are you including transportation?
Well, if you wanna do that as the next step, sure, but what is it for all of our electrical?
Because we came out, it was like, three, four, or five of those, maybe one megawatt.
One megawatt. I thought it was only three, maybe four.
Each one does about two hundred houses.
So, it's about twenty acres, right?
Yeah, so four, not very much.
But we. Of course, we, to me, peak. Then we wouldn't have electricity at night or in winter.
Yeah, no, meets peak, but it meets peak, and then you're gonna need five times that for capacity, which is still not that big, yeah, granted, it's not that big, so, I didn't realize that, that's an interesting point, so.
But we, again, one of the things.
We were only counting houses, we didn't have the commercial or the institutional, you know.
Farms to pump water up the top of the skiway, to store it, to drop it at night.
So, we were just basing that on houses, though, not commercial.
Okay, we'll double it, it's still not a huge number, right?
But one of the challenges on a regulatory basis is, we can't, we can't say, oh, we're gonna have twenty, only twenty acres. We have to put it in terms of where and
Right.
the consistency of, of why we're putting it there.
You're also not gonna be able to control where that power goes, that you could very easily have thirty, forty, fifty acre of systems that none of the power is transferred into Lime, whether it be.
Yeah, but that's always the case there, it's like.
But what I'm saying is that, that, you know, looking at Lime's goal for being carbon-free for electricity, adding more solar capacity, or allowing more solar systems, might not get you there, because it could be going.
Plus, there's the nighttime thing, right, it's like, we can make ourselves net neutral, but we actually suck electricity from the grid twelve hours a day, and it's not, and so, we're, you know, we're not really a full solution, but.
Hello, planning board meeting, hello.
Hello.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
David Robey from Bliss Lane, the public, I am the public tonight. I'd like to speak when, when it's convenient.
This is, this is convenient for you.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Okay, uh, this is a great, a great meeting and great conversation, and thank you all for what you're doing. Stephen, thank you in particular for bringing such important new comments to the board. But, but I have good news for all of us. Lime can be one hundred percent green power very easily. All we have to do is, is join either the Keene Power Community, the Keene Coalition, which has joined it right now, or we can join up with Hanover and the other members of the, of the Community Power Coalition, New Hampshire. We, we can get a hundred percent green power. The people who are in the Keene Coalition are getting a hundred percent green power right now. We don't have to, uh, we don't have to agonize over where to put commercial solar arrays. The commercial solar arrays are in place, and the wind power is in place, and the nuclear and hydro is in place now. All we have to do is join up with the other communities and tap into it. It's easy, we don't have to tear a community apart. And that's not to say that we shouldn't continue with accessory solar use, we should. But we don't have to have commercial arrays anywhere in the town of Lime to achieve one hundred percent green energy.
So, would that be your preference, David, that we not permit commercial or larger solar systems in the town of Lime?
Yes, and it's certainly the way I feel, and I feel. Yes, and certainly the way I feel, and I feel that way because of the, of the experience in Keen. We can get green power without having commercial arrays in the town of Lime. I want green power. To get green power, we have to have commercial arrays, but they don't have to be in the town of Lime.
I mean, that does bring up back to the more general point, which is, if there are all these alternatives right now and people aren't signing up for them, then why are we trying to fix the problem in our own town by changing the planning, the planning and making amendments? It seems a little bit crazy. It's like bringing a horse to water, but they won't drink it, it's like, well.
Yeah.
So I told you our ordinance was good.
Stephen, that was my point, 'cause I mean, I think within just a few years, we could have Lime on a hundred percent green between Direct Energy or, or the Community Power Coalition or whatever, I mean, it sounds like it's all there, we could, people could be on it, you know?
It certainly sounds like an untapped opportunity to me, but.
And we're never gonna get one hundred percent, but we could maybe get the.
Well, it's, it's, it's really a figurative hundred percent.
Right.
And we all understand, I think we all understand.
Well, it is a hundred percent for everybody who wants green power. We can't make people sign up for green power, but we can certainly make it available to.
Right, that, that's true. Any comments?
So, David, can you clarify for me, in areas that are commercially zoned, are there any limitations on people's ability to put? Somebody wanted to do one of these large solar arrays in a commercial zone, they, they could do that already?
As long as it means.
Well, now, he was talking to David Robbins.
I was talking to David Robbins, I'm sorry, Mr. Robbins.
Well, when you, when you finish your answer, Dave, let me answer.
Yes, I believe, yes, you could, um, put a commercial solar in a commercial district, although it is not listed as one of the allowed uses in town. So that is a kind of a, a unanswered question, that when you look at, uh, the table four one, it lists all the, the uses that are available and energy generation is not one of those listed uses. So, um, while it is a commercial use, I'm not sure, um, it would be something that I would definitely talk to town council over and give them both sides and say, what do you think, before I issued a permit?
Would the, would the footprint?
The footprint would be an issue, you know, you'd have to keep the, the footprint to whatever, um, you're allowed for that one.
Two six thousand or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I don't think it's a question for town council. It's perfectly clear that the zoning ordinance does not include solar power as a commercial use. And so it's not allowed, not to say that it couldn't be allowed, all we have to do is amend the ordinance. But we would have to amend the ordinance if we want commercial solar. And, and why would we want commercial solar? Unless it's directed to the town of Lime. But why would the town of Lime want to bother with a small-scale solar array? Which, because of its size, is not going to be as efficient or as inexpensive as the solar arrays that we can tap into on a, on a massive wholesale basis by joining Keen or joining the, the Community Power Coalition.
Hey, David, I, I actually, I wanna be contrarian for a second. I, I basically agree with what you're saying at one level, but I can imagine a world in the not-too-distant future, let's say fifteen years out, maybe twenty, where places like the town of Lime would raise a bond to put in solar, in this case, we're talking, it sounds like five megawatts or maybe it's gonna be ten when we deal with capacity, and storage, so they, the town of Lime has a highly resilient energy system on its own. And it might be networked into other communities around the state and around the nation in loose connections, so that when all the hell breaks loose in an ice storm or some nefarious affair, that in fact, the town is very resilient. And so I actually can see that in the future, and so I'm not arguing right now strongly that we should start papering over Lime with solar, but I can see a future where we actually are a very resilient, resourceful community that can.
That would be dependent upon storage, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely, but, you know, if you think about something like Hurricane Sandy, all these people, friends of mine in New, New Jersey, out of power for ten days, running all these generators, whatever, if they simply had some solar and enough stor- storage to run their refrigerators overnight in a small AC unit, way better situation. And so I think, and, and that, you know, I'm only being contrary, David, because I think we have to think ahead and say, well, can we see the day that's actually a better answer overall? And we're not, you know, freeloaded on somebody else's green field somewhere else.
But so then let me ask you, do you think that, that day is today? Cause we're that, we're dealing with, with the present.
I think that day is starting today. I would encourage smaller scale, more distributed, less disruptive, and then us starting to think about, could we actually, like, could Flith Hole Road become its own mini-grid eventually? Could the town of Lime become its own mini-grid? And can we be part of resilient power system that's linked into these other communities that David's already talked about, that are already accessing green power?
So, uh, following up on that, if we, if, if that's a, would be a, a, a goal, uh, that the board, you know, for the board or in the town, under those circumstances, would it makes, does it make sense for commercial arrays that are sending the energy elsewhere? I mean, would that contradict what you're, you know, the robustness of Lime being its own energy grid?
I, I, I think the answer is going to be from an economic point of view and then perhaps an economic security point of view, is that the grid provides many, many benefits, 'cause it brings all this redundancy into it. And so pretending that this electron starts here and stays here is kinda not.
Not significant.
Yeah, not worth thinking about right now. The question from a energy security and resiliency point of view would be, if the wire is cut somewhere, how do, how do we do? And, you know, do we end up like many, many communities in Texas a couple of years ago where, hey, that was a problem? Or are we able to gather in the school, at least stay warm or provide water or whatever, food or whatever it might be? Or something even better than that, if we were to distribute a system. And so the more we can have more solar produce, you know, being distributed throughout the community, the more resilient we will become and that when we can link in storage cost-effectively, even more resilient on top of that.
So but, so is there a distinction between, I, I, like, two scenarios? One is like, the more the merrier in terms of where the electrons start, we don't care. But in terms of what you're talking about in the future, where Lime has a certain independence and ter- and reliance, that's my question. So are, are, are we wanting to encourage, um, in-community solar as opposed to ex-community solar?
I, I guess my short answer, or longest answer would be, I think to the extent that we encourage cost-effective implementation of distributed solar within Lime will lead to the long-term resiliency of Lime and its power system. Because we'll be able to add to that in the terms of energy storage, in terms of batteries or whatever else it might be over the next twenty years. And the more we have that here and encourage it, I don't think, you know, for commercial people who wanna sell power, they're gonna go, well, when it's bigger, it's cheaper, and that's always true. But I, you know, you'd have to have a strong argument to say, well, I, we need to put in a five-megawatt system to make it cost-effective. It's like, cost-effective for what? Cause it, you know, the, the cheapest solar of all is solar that you put in and it displaces really expensive electricity you're already buying. Like, if you're buying it twenty cents from New Hampshire Electric Co-op right now, you, you want a system that displaces that. If you start to overproduce, as many people have in their contracts now, that's, you're not getting paid full market value or eventually you will not be paid your, your displaced cost, 'cause you're still paying for the wires and the transmission and all this other stuff.
Yeah, well, that's a question I had. If, if we have autonomous parts of Lime, then we still have to use the grid, we still have to use the Eversource grid.
The wires, yeah.
So I've always wondered what would happen as the, say, Eversource, as they start selling less electricity, as more and more people use solar, whatever. So they, they make some money on their electricity, 'cause they're buying it wholesale.
Yeah.
So they're, I assume they're just gonna keep raising their delivery cost, because they're not gonna lose money. So how's that gonna work in, you know, people are just gonna be more and more and more delivery charged.
This is a very fundamental problem for our society, actually, which is, and it's called the death spiral of utility, which is, as solar energy gets cheaper and storage gets cheaper, and as I mentioned, you, thirty cents, you could get off the grid and save money, right? And that was ten years ago. Then the utilities, the one, especially ones that are regulated in their monopolies, they're, they need and they're actually required to make their costs a capital. And so what happens is the, the regulator return. And so as their, as their kilowatt hour use, the total amount of energy they sell goes down, it doesn't change the cost and it doesn't change the return. And so the rates go up. And then when the rates go up, more people go like, well, that's more expensive than me being off the grid or putting in solar and displacing my peak time or whatever it might be. And then the kilowatt hours go down again and then the denominator's smaller and then the rate. So this is a huge problem throughout the US right now. It's a huge problem. And, and, and it's actually a very inequitable problem, because the people who are going, who are putting solar on the roof and displacing expensive Eversource electrons have more money. Right? That, that, in the US, this is five-year-old data, but the, the load of moderate income group of Americans, which is a hundred million Americans, the solar penetration rate was zero point zero four percent, that's zero percent. So it's, it's wealthier people that have been putting it in, they're taking the electrons back from the utilities, the utilities are feeling the pressure to say, hey, we're not selling, and that's why there's pressure all over the US to stop people from doing that metering and to stop people putting in solar.
Right. So the ultimate solution is for everyone to have their own storage in their cellar and have their own solar, whatever, and then you're totally off the grid.
I actually think the right solution is probably, um, the New Hampshire Electric Co-op. It's a nonprofit, it's out to lower its costs for its, its customers and it's constantly testing ways to do that, you know? And with renewable energy, you don't need to go out to the market and find ten billion dollars to put in a nuclear power plant in. Lime could raise a bond next year for five million dollars and probably put in a five-megawatt system. Maybe, maybe it would cost us ten million, because we're more expensive and small, but for not that much money, and let's just wish it was three years ago, we could've gone out to the market for four percent. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we can do.
So we put in a five-megawatt, then how would that work exactly for the town of Lime? I mean, all that elec- that electricity wouldn't all go to Lime, though, right?
Well, it never does, it goes where it's in the four winds, but, you know, you'd have to have a contract with an off-taker, which is the town of Lime, so you'd try to do it behind as many meters as you can. And then you would contract with the people in the town of Lime and then you would contract to people who wanna take your power at other times.
But we'd still be using, Eversource's poles and wires.
And then we'd have to pay for that eventually, yeah.
Yeah. Right, but their cost is probably just keep going up.
Well, but their cost of wires is not going up.
No, but their cost would go up as they're making less money on electricity.
Well, they're se- they're separate businesses, they're substantially separate businesses. The distribution, the poles and the wires part of the business is separate from the kilowatts.
It's still gonna go up.
It's still gonna go up, yeah.
Well, but, but only.
Well, actually, if they're moving the same electrons through the same wires, the cost for the distribution shouldn't go up. Cause they're just told, they're just told.
But you, you were saying that they're required to have a cost.
The return on investment.
Yeah, return on investment.
Well, you know, we're getting into the very complex world of utility economics.
All right, so, so let's, let's drop it.
But, but, yeah, it really depends, okay?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're getting into the weeds.
Yeah.
So what, what I'd like to ask the board, uh, is, um, the, the next steps we, we wanna do. I mean, one thing, well, I'll, I'll go, I'll go last. What does the board wanna do?
My view is that we ought to continue to gather information about, I mean, wha- what's really on our plate is, do we wanna allow, do we wanna propose a zoning amendment to the town that allows larger, more commercial type of areas?
That's the primary.
And, and since to me, our next step is to continue doing what we're doing here and that's gather information. We probably wanna talk to someone from New Hampshire, New Hampshire Electric Co-op, we wanna talk to maybe somebody from Eversource if we can.
If we could get somebody from.
And then, and then, uh, at some point, when we feel like we've gotten the, as much information as we can, we, we need to put our heads together and decide whether we wanna move forward with trying to draft something that permits larger systems or whether we wanna, uh, uh, take the position that David and, and I think Stephen have taken, which is, look, that just doesn't make sense for Lime and we ought not to, you know, well, we, well, I mean, joking about it, but may, we may come to the conclusion that what we had before was what we ought to have and we just go forward with that to the town.
Or somewhere in between.
And it may, it may make sense down the road in ways, but we don't, may not have to deal with it right now, we can always change it down the road.
Let, let me, does, does anybody know how we could get somebody from Eversource to come?
Yeah, I think Deana can do that.
Deana can?
Well, that's how she did it, but we, how we got them before, for the, um, Lime Common Committee, Deana, Deana called them.
Could you talk to her, then?
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm just really trying to think, understand the thinking of some folks who said, when we were talking about putting a, the Bailey's installation in, that they were very focused on making sure that those electrons stayed in Lime, that the customers must be in Lime. But now are perfectly happy buying direct energy electrons from Texas. I don't, I don't quite understand, you know, how it's worked, worked one way or another.
You mean, whether that's a contradiction?
Yeah, I, I'm just.
I don't see that as a, I mean, I can say for my, for myself, I don't see it as a contradiction, because I don't have the option of doing anything else.
But I mean, why could, why would you want to keep Bailey's project from selling to?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know that I would, but I think.
From distributing outside of Lime.
What I'm recalling from that conversation was whether what was passed by the town, what people thought that was, did people, were people going to want everything for Lime or not? That's, that's what I recall. But it, it's an open question, I don't think it really matters what was said then. We're getting more and more information.
Well, I said that then, that if we were going to sacrifice ag soils, wetlands, forests, um, that it better benefit our community, because we're losing those things from our community. That's how I felt.
Okay.
So, um, I'll say that.
Okay.
And, um, I, I, you know, for people who don't have an option of buying in Lime, you know, they're doing what they can to get green energy.
But the folks are buying electrons from Direct Energy, who are, those communities are then sacrificing their resources.
Well, that's a decision those communities made and we're making our, we're, we're, we're making decisions for our community.
No, I'm Texas, so I don't need to tumbleweed in there.
I don't, do they even care? I mean, I, you know, some people don't care about what, you know, they, any places don't care about their environment.
But being able to care is a result of our excellence, essentially.
But maybe, um, it, by not having any Lime or not having any in certain towns, it isn't decreasing the amount of so- arrays that can be built. Cause I think these companies, these big companies that are doing profit, they can put as many in as they wanna put in. I mean, they can find places for it, it's not like they're being limited, in other words, they're saying, well, we don't have Lime, so we can buy.
And the bigger, if, if I'm correct, isn't it, the bigger the array, essentially, the, the better?
Well, it usually lowers the cost. And I, and I think this is the, this debate about NIMBYism or moving that problem to somebody else's backyard is got to be overlaid by, well, what was the environmental impact there and then cost-effectively? So for example, here in northern New Hampshire, we have ridge-top windmills, right, turbines. They're, they're not very effective, they're, they're, were not necessarily a very good idea in terms of the energy they produce and what they did to the environment. Whereas, you know, offshore main, Gulf of Maine wind will probably very be inexpensive in the next. in the next fifteen years or something like that, the well to then deal with transmission. So I, you know, I don't think it is, is like, well, we've put this problem onto these people in Texas, there's a lot of scrubland in Texas where the solar is not that big an impact or there's big wind turbines in the Midwest where you grow crops underneath them. And so it's, I think what we can say in Lime is, here's the things we're doing to try to hit the right balance between lowering our direct carbon footprint, both supply and demand, and creating, you know, at least for me, Lime is a place which is going to quickly become the example for other parts of the country, which is the real benefits to actually having these somewhat intact ecosystems.
Yeah, I think that's extremely under-appreciated.
Yeah, and undervalued right now. I mean, when, you know, when the, when the Dartmouth biomass plant got scuttled or was being scuttled or whatever it was, I went down to Woods Hole and talked to the people down there who'd written in and also John Sturman at MIT. And they made this point that like, in a mixed forest like this, ten percent of the trees sequester ninety percent of the carbon. It's kind of an amazing, and it's a big one, it's not surprising because they can add a lot of mass every year. And so when we think about that impact and whether we cut those things down, it is certainly the cheapest way to store carbon in the world is to have these kinds of trees around. And our, our forest is just like in the primordial depths of time, our forest is probably like being, it's like a ten-year-old.
Yeah, it's adolescent.
Yeah, adolescent, it's just, it is just revving out.
Just getting going, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think people appreciate that.
Yeah.
That's why all the white pines are falling over at the same time. They're all very age.
Right. They'll fall over.
They're all, they're all the same age.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're all a hundred and fifty years old.
All right, so we want to have more, gather more information?
Yeah.
Maybe people can think about, you know, questions, what, what information do we want? I mean, let's, let's try to move this thing along.
I'll just say, I reached out to Revision to get the perspective from, you know, being installers and not wanting a out-of-state group, but Revision is now, you know, multi-state or whatever. But anyway, for local people, energy emporium people. So I was told Ken Cork wasn't the correct person to speak with and that this Beth the Wind person was. And she's very willing to come and talk to us about how, you know, how she looks at it and permitting.
So could you, could you nail down on?
Well, I sent the email to David and to you about finding a date. So it's, I'm not the scheduler, you guys are the scheduler for our agenda.
Let's get a date.
Yeah, I probably say, I'm not gonna do anything until I get back.
She's going to, to come.
Week after next.
Okay.
So.
So, but put it on your.
We have meetings on the, on the books, don't we?
Yeah, it's every.
So we just, just pick a meeting that you want, just pick a meeting that you want her to come to.
The next meeting is fine.
So she's, she's hap, but she wanted some questions. So you're apropos to, well, what are our questions?
All right, so why don't people come up with questions for Beth? And I'll send her the.
Send them to David and.
Are you gonna be around until?
Oh, we won't. I'm not here next week, I won't be back until Tuesday.
Send them, is it okay for them to send them to me?
Yes.
Send them to me.
Communication is perfectly fine.
And then I will send them to Beth.
Yep.
Okay?
Sort of two general groups of questions, right? It seems to me, one is sort of things that you would want to know to make the decision about whether or not these larger systems make sense at all.
Right.
And then secondly, if you cross that bridge, you want to know, I think, or there'd be questions about, well, if we, if we were gonna permit this, what are the contours of the ordinance gonna look like?
Yeah, I mean, she was quite excited about the, the concept that we as a group understood that we're not gonna be ready for one hundred by twenty thirty, you know, or be ready by twenty thirty and that, you know, not everyone's gonna put solar or do what they're gonna do. And so we wanted to make the possibility available for a larger system and, you know, in her view, with trying to get these things cited, what were the problems? So she was going to come and talk to us about the problems or obstacles that regulations could bring away.
So it sounds like she's, she's already, she's already gonna give us information that's in favor of the larger things, so what we.
That's, that's her business.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's a given. So I think the questions for her wouldn't be, should we do this? Should I say yes? I, I think the questions for her are, what are the practical things we should know if we go ahead with this?
And from her perspective, I mean, one of our, you know, questions is distribution system and, you know, I think she's probably got some firsthand knowledge about, well, working with utilities, I think the thing. So she, she is, I think she wanted to come in person, but Zoom would be fine.
Okay.
And then she, she was, you know, very willing to come and, and meet with us. And I think that that, when she does get scheduled in, that the Energy Committee should also be present to make it the, the best, you know, the best.
Okay, well, maybe I should, maybe I should be in touch with them ahead of scheduling when she comes.
Make sure they're there.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, and you'll, you'll contact them?
I'll see about EverSource.
Okay.
And pick a date for them.
All right, well, that seems like good next steps. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
All right. Many, many thanks for both of you coming and sitting through this and giving feedback. It is greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Well, thanks for having us and good luck in the quest.
Thank you.
Can I, can I make another comment?
Oh, the pub, the public is back.
A hundred percent green energy by two thousand and thirty is easy. We can be a hundred percent green energy in two years. All we have to do is move forward with the Community Power Coalition. But I'd like to, if Steve, Stephen, if Stephen's still there, I.
No, no, Stephen, Stephen, I just see him getting into the, no, he's, he's here. He's, I'm just kidding.
I, I, I think, I think Stephen is, is absolutely right, that it's, that, that we ought to, we as a community ought to look for, look into the possibility of a Lime green power system with storage so that we are resilient. But I, I think that would have to be done by the town rather than commercially. In any event, it, it's, it's a point, it's a, I think it's a very valid point. If, if the town of Lime put in a five, what would it be, five-megawatt system and we could keep the power in town and we could store it so that it's available, that, that would be desirable. I don't know whether, whether the cost benefit would work out all right. But in the meantime, while we're studying that, that'll take quite some time, I think, unless Stephen can figure it out in a couple of days.
But, but your, your points about the, the keen thing is, I understand that and.
Well, I, I think David's idea is a good one to frame our conversation with Beth. She would love to put a five-megawatt thing here for the town of Lime and, and fix that up for us. I mean, so that's a really good perspective to throw to her and say, how would this work? You know, how do you make this work for us?
And what money it costs per, per kilowatt hour?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. And, and I think, you know, would, would, would those numbers change in three years or five years? I mean, looking out the technology curve to say, oh yeah, if you do batteries this week, it'll cost you thirty-five cents a megawatt hour, a kilowatt, kilowatt hour. But if you, you know, batteries will be cheaper in three years because we can see coming down the bike. I mean, she'd be looking at a crystal ball, right? Still be.
Well, she has, she has a better crystal ball than we do.
Right.
It might be interesting to understand what the IRA money might do too. I wonder if you were on the leading edge of the community and said, yeah, we're gonna put in a community power system with this much storage if you get thirty cents on the dollar subsidized or something.
Do you know if the storage can be distributed and not all in one spot?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. It's kind of like a substation, you could just.
Yeah, 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 but like a neighborhood.
It would normally reside near to the production point. So if you distribute the production and all that stuff.
Yeah.
But, but I think to the point that was made earlier about, we, we could study this forever, but we need to act. But it's pretty interesting to think about saying to this commercial source, what if we wanted to do this? And then if we sort of said, okay, but now maybe we didn't do it that way, what if the town said, we want to get five megawatts in or eight megawatts, whatever the number is, and we want this percentage to be rooftop, we want this much to be small-scale commercial or local, and we want this much, we'll plug it in here. I don't know, it's an interesting thing to think about. And the thing is, this stuff is all stepwise, so it's not like if we make, unless we make a big bang decision, if we get some things going, so, you know, if we get ourselves from ten percent to twenty percent solarized on homes next year, that is a step in the right direction, right? If we put in some, whatever, twenty or thirty kilowatt systems, it's a step in the right direction.
I think that's a really important point is to provide ourselves, yeah, if we made a big splash, that would be one way to go, but if, if we modulated our way forward, that's, that's another one, another avenue.
Yeah, a plan to where we want to get.
But it does, it is kind of interesting that we're talking about really huge capital costs when people can lift up the telephone today and they can do it.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and then they can get a contract for a couple of years that's gonna save them money for that, that period of time.
It'll be all green.
Yeah, it'll be green and.
The market might be saying something.
Well, actually, I think a big part of it is inertia. And I think it's something that, and we're not casting aspersions, but that EverSource kind of has depended on is that.
Yeah.
You know, that people are uncomfortable, well, am I actually gonna get the electricity?
Well, it's like how many people still have their consolidated communication landline when their cell phone works absolutely perfectly at their home? You know, it's like that, you know, it's having redundancy, reliance on a system that has worked for you. And so I, I just wonder how much of that is in people's thinking and why they're not.
My cell service doesn't work, so.
Yeah, my, my cell service doesn't.
Mine doesn't either, but I'm just.
I don't know. Whom's cell service?
We're in Lime, there's no cell service.
I don't have a cell.
I'm exactly the person you're talking about. I get private cell service at home and I don't think my phone has, my landline has rung in a month.
I'll, I'll call you. All right, thank you very much. I think it's time for everybody to be in bed and, and we, what? Oh yeah, the minutes, let's do the minutes.
You didn't miss that.
See y'all later. Thanks.
Didn't we already do these minutes?
Apparently not.
I don't believe so.
Well, let's, let's do them again.
There's a typo, I think I said it to you, right?
Yeah, I got those there.
So what, what date are you looking, how we started?
Two twenty-three.
Okay.
I will the minutes be accepted as, as provided?
Yeah, what was that?
February twenty-three?
Yeah, I guess, well, just, item two, the last, I just take the S off of meat.
Yep, that was one of the ones. And Rich, you had a.
Yes, I did.
A question about, I'll let you sort of.
Ah, so I, did you get the spelling updated?
Yeah, I got pronouns, yeah.
Yep. So in the third to the last paragraph on the first page, it says, Mr. Bond, your address to concern, the third cutting of forests would release more carbon into the environment than the solar system would provide, produce, that's fine. I, I don't think. No, it is advised, it shouldn't be produced, it should be eliminated.
Right, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's true too.
Yeah, so I made that correction.
I, I didn't like the second sentence in that paragraph, and so I went back to his presentation that says.
What is the second sentence?
Uh, he would not recommend clear-cutting a large area, but believed the removal of trees in such a scenario would still have a positive outcome. And his, his statement in the presentation was stronger, I just took that sentence from it that says, though none of us want to see clear cuts, don't be overly concerned, I mean, we should not be overly concerned about cutting a reasonable number of trees to enable solar as the carbon benefits seem to help.
So that, that. I mean, that's close to the. I think we can just sum it up, you know, how, how would you put it in a way where we don't have to put such a long sentence? That, that he felt that there were compelling.
He felt cutting trees was worth it.
Was it worth it?
I mean, just, Rich has written out the sentence for me, I can swap it out in ten seconds.
He felt, yeah.
All right, so as amended, I'd like to make a motion, or you made a motion?
Sure.
Yep, I made a motion.
Okay, and you second. All those in favor? The multitude opposed? Okay, and then the other one?
Sorry, I didn't.
I hope it changes to the second.
The only question I would have under item two, it says acceptance of the minutes from two twenty-three. That's why I was wondering whether we had to do these.
I'm sorry, that should have been two oh three.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, maybe the date was off.
I'll fix that. And then I'll also change the item two to, actually, instead of item three, get two item threes.
Oh, what's that? Anything else? All right, I'd like to make a motion to move the minutes as amended for a second. Rich Brown, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. You are free to be you.
Does anyone else who was at the town meeting on Tuesday, did anyone else notice, like all of the regular Warren articles that weren't contested and everyone was just voting on it, I kept thinking I heard somebody sitting off in the corner saying no. Like at the end, when, when he asked, anyone opposed? I thought there was like one.
I heard, there was one.
The guy sitting next to me.